All right, welcome back. We're gonna go to nine point three point one.
Good day, Mr. Reeve and all council. At the December twelfth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of council, a delegation from the Bonneville Nordic Ski Club presented their proposal for a cooperative ski rental program to be established at the M D of Bonneville Shaw House facility. At that meeting, council requested administration to explore the proposal with the club and to bring the request to a future meeting of council for consideration. Members of the M D Community Services Department and the Bonneville Nordic Ski Club met and discussed a number of potential solutions to house and administer the ski equipment for their members this winter. In the end, on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, a letter from the Bonneville Nordic Ski Club was received informing administration the best option for the upcoming season would be to keep their ski rental program as it is currently stored and administered. Administration has let the club know that if they wish to revisit this in the future, we will open, we are open to working with them further towards a continued success of their valued program. We have attached the letter from the Bonneville Nordic Ski Club dated August the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Reference to the strategic plan, we value quality of life and goal three promote community development. Closing administration recommended action is that council accepts the Bonneville Nordic Ski Club request for the cooperative Nordic Ski Rental Program update as just information.
Okay, thank you. Anyone like to make a motion? Yeah, Counselor Cravieak?
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cravieak, for making this motion that council accepts the Bonneville Nordic Ski Club's request for cooperative Nordic Ski Rental Program update as information. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote.
That's carried, thank you. On to nine point three point two.
Good morning, Reeve and council, it's my pleasure to bring before you today an R F D for the Municipal District of Bonneville Regional Airport Master Plan. In the spring of twenty twenty-four, the M D received a matching government grant from Northern Alberta Regional Economic Development for an airport economic impact assessment to identify the return on investment of infrastructure associated with upgraded infrastructure services to the adjacent industrial subdivision. While investigating this project and reviewing the recently completed A A M A report on support for long-term viability of Alberta's community reports, which is Appendix A, it was brought to the attention of administration that the development of an airport master plan is also likely the next step needed to secure external financial support of related economic development aspirations for the community. It is a document sought by potential funding sources such as provincial and federal governments when they choose to provide assistance for regional airport expansion projects. Therefore, administration is requesting council approve, council approval to complete an airport master plan for the M D Regional Airport, which will also help identify the costs and benefits of future upgraded and expanded operations of the airport. The airport master plan would include the analysis of the airport's current economic, social, and emergency management benefits and overall utilization levels, community and stakeholder engagement, a multi-year capital asset management plan, including infrastructure and services in addition to contextualizing the airside and groundside improvements, including pavement, lighting, visual aids, and terminal building, et cetera, and their costs along with the other investment required at the airport. Non-airport development economic impact assessment, infrastructure, and services may be identified that are impactful to airside development uptake. The master plan will also include airport activity forecasts, noise exposure forecasts, a twenty-year pro forma and assessment of the airport's aeronautical fees and lease rates, airport development plan, land use plan, and development of a resource guide for improved grant applications and creation of an overarching vision and strategy for the airport that will prevail through changeovers in administration. The development of an airport economic development impact assessment in conjunction with an airport master plan should be part of any regional airport overall investment attraction plan. Attached for council's review is Appendix A, the airport, Alberta Airports Management Association Final Report Regarding the Support for Long-Term Viability, which was released May in twenty twenty-four. The reference to our strategic plan, it aligns with the building of a viable diversified regional economy, the objective to develop an economic development strategy inclusive of business and industrial attraction and retention and the, and expansion while maintaining our rural influences. The objective, a long-range airport expansion, and also the objective of airport commercial subdivision. The costs or source for the funding, the project is fifty-six thousand dollars, the source of funding would be reallocation of funds from the twenty twenty-four operating budget. Administration is recommending that council directs administration to complete the airport master plan for the M D of Bonneville Regional Airport to a maximum cost of fifty-six thousand dollars to be funded from the airport operating project. The following options for council exist: the council directs administration to complete an airport master plan for the M D of Bonneville Regional Airport to a maximum cost of fifty-six thousand dollars to be funded from the twenty twenty-four operating budget. Two, the council refers Municipal District of Bonneville Regional Airport Master Plan report, report back to administration for additional information and bring back to a future meeting, and the council accepts the airport. Three, the council accepts the airport master plan development fund request as information. At this point, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Deputy Reeve, correct, then. Mr. Swegert there?
Yeah, thank you. It's not so much a question, but just, I think it'd be wise for us to bring this to work budget, we're going into budget deliberations here in a month. And this is a large, large item that wasn't really necessarily on the, wasn't on my radar, right, right now until I saw it in the package here. So I would, I definitely suggest that we bring it to, to budget deliberations and get it in the twenty twenty-five operating budget.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, so my, my question was the, who's gonna, who's doing the master plan and how do we know it's gonna cost fifty-six thousand dollars?
So, so this is initially a result as spoken to earlier here, we had an N red grant done, right? And so we put it up for proposal, for proposal, right, for, for the economic impact development of, of the airport. And so then we had the opportunity to ask for value-added strategies that would be associated with the initial economic impact. And that information was provided by, by the bidders, and so that information came through in the R F D process.
Yeah, I don't, sorry, I don't recall that, but that'd be like Counselor Deputy Reeve mentioned, bring it back, I guess, and, and maybe we can sort of have a bit more detail on that N red report and the rest of it, so whatever. I'm sure we've seen it, right?
That's, if that's the will of council?
Okay, Counselor Skarson and Counselor Faddeev.
Yeah, I mean, I actually agree with Josh on this one, so.
Oh, we need a five-minute breaker.
I'll just wait for them to finish up here. So again, the master plan, like what, so we've already gotten the grant, but this is for more money towards the project at the airport, or what would this master plan do for us?
Okay, so I'll, I'll try and, I'll walk it back and hopefully I'll do a good job explaining it. So, so earlier in the year, we put together a grant application that included SiteLink for investment attraction. We also included in that grant a request for industrial, commercial, regional gap analysis. And the third piece was the, and I want to make sure that I always get this right, the airport development economic impact assessment, right? And so we received funding for all three of those, and our, our parameters were, were such that we wanted each of those to be broken up. So they, so they all, they all went out to, to, to R F, R F P or R F Q. And so we haven't delivered the economic development impact for the airport yet. And as we were searching through that section of the deliverables, it was brought to our attention because I had asked for if there's anything value-added that those respondents could add to the process that they explain what it is. And so there was a breakout of the cost for the initial economic impact, which was one cost, right? Then they brought to the table this other value-added, which I didn't ask for in the sense of specifics. I asked for them to add any, you know, what, what else could they do for us? And so they said they could do this for us at this cost. So there was an, an opportunity for us to assess all of them based on the basic request, and then some of them added extra things that they would, they thought would, would be appropriate or add value to the process. Does that answer the question?
No, not at all. So I guess about my question is, is that what will this report or this plan do for us? Is this to apply for another grant?
Yeah, yeah, so sorry, I, I didn't understand the question, but certainly what, what's, what's happening is there's, there's a an interest from, from both the federal and provincial governments over time to invest in, in infrastructure, right? And in order to do that, the best practices would include having a master plan that would tick the boxes in order for you to move forward with that grant application. I, I think that's.
So what, yeah, so what, so like what kind of grants are available? But, you know, or is this a specific one, or is this just to have it for in case we apply for a grant?
Well, well, certainly, there's a, there's two sides to that, there is, there is the new grants that could be made available, but at this particular point in time, there, if one wanted to wait in the next cycle, there's the SCOP grant and the E C P grant and, and the Ed Ra, N red grant as well. And, and so if, if you wanted to wait for that cycle, that's certainly an option that you have. But we'll, we'll still, they'll still be most likely, you know, a fifty percent cost for that, they're usually matching grants. But I, I can't speak to those grants because they certainly, we haven't made application to them yet, right? So, but I mean, just, just, you know, from, from the perspective of, of, of an economic development support document, when, when we know what our airside movements are and, and we know how we can commercialize this and where our fee, fee rates will be and, and how much we can invest and where our investment, our, our return on investment is, it makes it much easier for us to, to sell the community and specifically to sell lots, you know, and, and to have companies move into the, into the area simply because they feel that the information about the airport has been, has been measured and that there is a plan that exists for whoever to invest in it, whether it's the municipality or a joint project between the municipality and private investors.
And so you're saying that the, the companies that you had, R P before said, hey, listen, we can do a master plan, it'll cost you another fifty thousand dollars? So we don't, like, we don't have a master plan already that you would update, or how about we had one done on the airport?
Okay, so, so I'm not an expert in avionics, but I, I know that this information is sometimes time-bound, right? So you're, you're capturing a piece of information from, I don't, I don't know when it was done, so I can't respond, but let's say hypothetically ten years ago, right? If, if we've had changes in our economy or there's been changes in wear and tear in the airport, or there've been new regulations that have, you know, been forced upon the airport, all of that new information has to be in the airport, otherwise the, as we move forward with the grant application, that information would be insufficient or invalid.
Yeah, we've only had the airport for a couple of years now, so I'm just, I, I thought that we had already done some of this, but.
Through the Reeve, there was a previous report was completed, but it was more of an infrastructure deficit report back when it was owned by the town of Bonneville. So that was back, that was like, I'm gonna guess four or five years ago, because that was before we did the lighting upgrades. That was one of the main things that came out of that report was that need to improve that, that infrastructure. So it definitely, it was, it was a piece of this, but it's only one piece that will be revisited and updated as, as Scott had, had commented on. The other piece that I just wanted to mention was following some discussions and meetings that the C A O and myself have had with the Department of Transportation and Economic Corridors. They had mentioned that this master plan component is key in order to secure future funding, whether that's through the STIP grant or through other grants that are available through the province. So it was, it was timing, I guess, for us to say, wow, we've heard this over here from the provincial level, and we've heard this over here during our R F P process with the consultants that did respond to the assessment side of, of our N red grant projects. So that's why we're bringing it forward now, just because everything seems to be meshing. That coupled with the fact that we do have room in our operating budget from a couple of different sources that we're able to pay for it within our confines of the twenty-four operating budget.
Are you talking about our, the operating budget for the M D, like the general budget, or do you have an operating budget at the airport?
Through the Reeve, no, it's, we're actually, we, we'd be pulling a bit of consulting services budget from infrastructure services and from the C A O office.
Counselor Faddeev, then Counselor Sipchik.
Yeah, so this kind of answer was, was kind of, my question was going to be with two twenty-four, twenty twenty-four operating budget, where you mentioned from, I was going along the same lines, is that a, just a airport infrastructure budget and was there enough money in there? So my question is, is there, like, is there enough money from that to this? And second, we know, we keep, you keep hearing about readiness for, you know, for the paving or water and sewer. If we have this plan, it's easier for us to prove that we need this, this money for, you know, I guess, future economic development, right? So, but thanks. So is that coming, that money coming from, so we don't have a airport I guess, operating budget, right?
Through the Reeve, the consulting services, the part of, it's within the Infrastructure Services Department. Part of the funding would come from that. It's not specifically allocated to the airport per se, but there is consulting services within Infrastructure Services Department twenty-four operating budget to cover these costs.
And is there money in there, is there enough money in there for this project?
Through the Reeve, that is correct, with a little bit of supplement from the C A O office consulting services as well. So, yes.
Yes, okay, thanks.
Counselor Sipchik?
Yeah, I, I think this is very important to go forward if we want to look at economic development and diversifying. I was on the SiteLink tour, and not only through the SiteLink tour, but through Alberta Hub, a committee I'm on. We've heard of this drone activity and opportunities there. I believe it all gals within our community with the military expansion at Cold Lake, where we heard positive results from our SiteLake locators about potential drone, drone manufacturing and testing here. And I think this is just a step forward to try and get more funding to assist with this so we can be prepared and go forward with these opportunities that we're hearing.
Deputy Reeve first?
Yeah, so the, the money is, there's, it's sort of in the budget, it's sort of not in the budget, it's, we can move money around in the budget to find money for it. But even earlier in our meeting today, we, we, we were told there wasn't any, we ran out of money for pump testing in the budget, but there could have been money, I guess, for that, if we just moved it from the C A O office or, or somewhere else. And I'm not opposed to doing this study, but I, I do think that it's, it's an item that should be in the budget. And a question for, for Scott, were you saying that there could potentially be grant funding for the study? Or, or grant funding only after we get the study done?
Yeah, so, so at this, at this point in time, I, I, we can, we can look for, for grant money, but I don't know of any that are specifically earmarked for like a airport master plan, right? So there would have to be some, some more investigation to understand sort of where all those timelines are, right? So this was just a really sort of, I guess, time-sensitive, time-bound thing in that we're already doing this other project, and it was brought to our attention again that, that, you know, this opportunity is gonna probably be, any further opportunity is gonna be hinged on having a master plan, right? So.
So you're saying it's time-bound because of what project exactly?
Well, we, we, you know, information that we're receiving through consultants and some folks in government is that there's, there's, you know, some opportunities coming, but in order to have access to those, we, we would have to have a master plan to proceed. It would be one of those checks in the box for us to proceed with, with, with the grant application, right?
Okay, Counselor Skarson and Counselor Sipchik, then anybody else?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, again, I'm on the same page, I, I feel it is probably important. I, I guess I'm just getting, you know, worn out with these fifty thousand dollar reports all the time, right? And sometimes they don't lead to anything. I'm just curious as to, you get a R F P back, or you get a, a breakdown of costs back from a company that's doing a report on this? Like, can you justify fifty thousand dollars for someone to write this up? Like, is this not something that you could do internally?
It, it's, it's definitely not something that I, I don't have the expertise for, and, and in, in talking to other folks inside senior administration, it's not something that, that, that we have, you know, a dedicated skill set for. And I, I think that when we take a look at the cost of this in comparison to other master plans that have been done, I think that the, the value is, is there, right? I, I don't think that we just, you know, obviously want to spend the fifty thousand dollars to spend it, but it's, it's part of a, a necessary part of the checking the box process if we want to expand the airport and have funding for that from either the federal or provincial government.
So I guess in turn, you, we better have, you know, a couple million in the bank for funding for the airport then? I mean, it's kind of senseless if we are recommended that we have funding to this, but we have to match it with money we may not have at the time, right?
So, so I think that there's, there's a logical progression to that, and in fact, there are some grants where they're asking for you to have some of the, obviously, the, the money there first. But what they're doing is asking us to do things like having an asset management plan and having our budget done in such a way that we are actually planning for that in the future. So, I mean, it's all part of what's being considered the, the appropriate process as, as we move forward in our relationship with the government.
Yeah, I, I, I get it, I just, I still think it's a budget item, but.
Yeah, Counselors Carson, I, I think we have two and a half million dollars for the, for the repaving part of it, so that is, that is there. And we're hoping for the, the STIP grant last time around, which we didn't get. And I know Esther and her, Ms. Keenbow and her team had discussions with the, with the municipal government in regards to that, and they're kind of hinting towards having this study to, to get the funding for air, any kind of airport infrastructure help, so.
Thank you, Counselor, sorry, you want to answer to that?
Yes, through the Reeve, just to add to that comment. If we are looking at potentially doing work on the runway, potentially doing work at the terminal or a new terminal, if we're looking at doing any of that, having an airport master plan in the grant applications for that capital work is going to be very important. So that's the main motivation for us bringing it forward today is we're hearing from the provincial department that, that that is the case. And, and that's potentially why we haven't been successful thus far in our grant applications for the airport projects we've brought forward for grant funding. So therefore, this, this just, the timing of it is, is where the current consultants who've responded to our R F P, some of them have been involved actually with that big provincial report that we have attached to this R F D that shows how do we get long-term funding for our regional airports, what are our focus areas, where, what are the things that check off the boxes to get future grant funding? So it, it just kind of all came together, which is why we're bringing it to council. We could wait and discuss this again during budget deliberations, and then we would, if it then approved, then we would go through this process again. However, just because there was room within, and I want to be specific in consulting services, specific budget areas in twenty twenty-four, that's, that's why we brought it forward today.
Mr. Reeve, yeah, so I've, I've had, I've been asking for a couple of years, I guess, but, you know, what is the need at the airport? What, what are the user groups, industry, what, you know, what do they need? How much, or, you know, how much are they willing to support it? I, I guess a master plan kind of checks all those boxes, does it? And, and, because you, you don't want to, you don't want to just create an old boys' flying club, you want to know that there's, there's use for this and industry needs it, and it's gonna help our economy. So I, I'm hoping a master plan covers all those.
Yes, and, and so if, if we take a little closer look at this, the master plan would, would talk about, you know, engagement, not, not, not just what we think. Quite often, a consultant will tell you what he thinks you want to hear. We're going to be engaging the end users, right? And then we're also going to be talking about those things that support airside and groundside, right? So it's not just, it's not just about the airplane operators per se, right? It'd be about the businesses that could locate there and the things that they would also need, right? And so that's the, the, you know, about talking about a whole master plan is not just the, the, the numbers about flying in and flying out. It's all the things that would be associated with gaining greater access to the airport, having better services at the airport, and those types of things that'll help grow the economy, right? So it's not, it's not just about the flyers, for sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess, just to beat the same drum here, I think, I still think it should be in the budget, especially if we're gonna be putting, if we're doing this and then we're gonna have to require to have multiple, you know, matching funds. We don't ever get a grant relief that doesn't require matching funds. So I don't really see it, us waiting a month or a month and a week to put this in the budget is really holding anything up. So I, I think we should, it'd be better to bring it back to budget. Because obviously every other item that we're talking about, the runway or terminal building, that's a budget item. It's kind of a jump in the gun to have, spend money before we have something in the budget.
Yeah, Counselor Faddeev?
Yeah, I totally understand, you know, but it's just one of those things where it's just gonna be another delay. I mean, we, we have two and a half million dollars in, in an airport fund for, for the repaving. This is gonna take time, this is gonna probably take another, how long, six months, eight months, a year before we get this back? So now we're looking at, at the next, six months, right? So now we're looking at the next, then we're looking at the next budget to put more money in. Where if we know what's, what's happening, we understand it. I mean, we, we have no issues with, maybe this was called a, an airport master plan slash brushing, maybe we could have got this.
I put it against the brushing too. Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we bring it back to the budget discussions, and we can vote on it and move on from there.
Okay, I guess I gotta write that up. All right, thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion, and Counselor X administration to bring the Municipal District of Bonneville Regional Airport Master Plan Project to the two thousand twenty-five Budget Deliberations for Consideration. Any discussion on this motion?
Mr. Reeve, so this is defeated, it could come back for the other, another motion?
Yes, that's correct. I just, Esther, could I just? Obviously, this is, like, I want you to just write to the, write to the point, do we need this or not?
Through the Reeve, our recommendation is to proceed, a hundred percent, to go ahead and, and do this now.
Thank you.
Well, if you're looking at six to eight months, which you just said, I'm sure another month or two ain't gonna break the bank.
Through the Reeve, the only reason I say that is because we do have the consultant now, the Counselors Carson is right, we can wait. We could potentially award it after the fact. There was some savings, though, I will add, with incorporating it into a current contract instead of doing a totally separate contract. So our costs might be. Um, so our costs might be higher, uh, by just putting it out as a separate document or a sec, a separate RFP. But it's, I can't say for sure.
Counselor Sipchik and Deputy Reeve.
Yeah, I was just hoping we would go forward with it because, uh, I just hate kicking the can down the road on all these things all the time and we just keep kicking the can. We talk about economic development, diversificate, diversifying. I think this is a big factor in it, so I just wanted to state my.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve.
So you referenced, we have another, uh, RFP that we can, this could be part of it if we do it right now, what?
It is part of it right now, if, if we want.
Okay. And sorry, what is it part of, though? I'm, I'm.
Uh, through the reef, so the, one of the three deliverables through our current NRED grant that we were approved for.
Yeah.
Was the, uh, impact assessment at the airport. Um, so that was the RFP that we had issued out. And so the responses came back and in those responses was, uh, the value-added project of doing a master plan for the airport. So it was within, it was presented as, as a part of, with the potential of adding it into that contract, which we've already put through.
Counselor Carson.
So I'm going to just ask Scott. So we just had, uh, you know, we've done many upgrades to the airport since we've taken it over. We've got plans to do other upgrades, but what is it that the airport is missing right now that we need to upgrade or to do whatever in order to attract all these businesses that want an airport?
So before they make an investment, they want to know that, that we have a sound business plan, right? Say, they want to know that we have a, a fairly strong idea of where our, our current traffic is, where our growth is, and if there's, uh, opportunities for economic development, right? So, so there's the, there's the aeronautical side of it and there's the, the business development side of it, but both of them have to have a business case, right? So do we currently have something that talks about, uh, a study for where, uh, all of our revenue generation is from, from fly-in fees? I, I don't think we have an accurate piece that does that. Do we have a 20-year pro forma that tells us where our costs are going to be and where our revenue is going to be for the next 20 years? I don't think we do, and this master plan will do that. So that'll help us with our long-term planning as well as obviously getting the investment, right?
So there's companies that are knocking on your door that say, I want to see your guys.
So if, if, if an investor were to come to us and they were considering investment here, they absolutely would like to see that and they would also like to see things like an asset management plan because what it tells them, if they're going to move here, they're going to have a stable economy or an administration that understands, um, how to generate revenue and how to control their finances because we've done a business plan for our, our different operating units.
It sounds like maybe this is something we should have done before we put millions of dollars into the airport. Isn't that enough of a token to say, yes, we are invested in this airport because we've dumped millions of dollars into it already?
I, um, I, I could, I could see how you could, you could have a comment like that, but it's a fairly general comment. If we were just talking about specific dollars that we invested, if it doesn't talk about groundside or airside or other types of services, depending on the resources needed by that particular business, that statement's not qualified enough.
I'd be curious to know who, yeah, like, who you've had these conversations with or is companies that are knocking on that door, right? They said there hasn't been, right?
Well, I, I guess, first of all, we've, we've actually just started down the, the road of, um, looking at the airport as an, an investment opportunity, right? So certainly we don't have a lot of folks knocking on the door, but as an example of something that just happened less than 72 hours ago, we, we had site selectors in from across North America and they're fill, filling out an exit survey and, and some of them are telling us, these are the types of things we need from your airport or your airport subdivision for you to be competitive. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other discussion on this motion? I'll pump the vote.
I'd like to make a motion for option number one, please.
Uh, just a comment, Counselors Carson. A lot of the stuff, it wasn't, you know, as glamorous as a big drone company or Amazon, but even just the basic of warehousing. So some of the things that we're looking at is just for, for transportation, a plane to come in, drop off goods, put them in a warehouse that others could tie in from. So anywhere from FedEx to anything along those lines too. So one of the key things that they mentioned during our cycling visit, uh, at the, at the airport, it was a, the whole cycling thing. Thank you, Scott, again. It was a very eye-opening.
Motion, Counsel. Question on this motion. I'll move.
All right, that motion is carried. Thank you. We're going to break for lunch.
Yes, on July 9th, 2024, a status report was presented, uh, to council by Macalany Limited with regards to Canoos Ridge Resort, planning project for the creation of mountain biking Nordic and hiking trails and all season glamping. Macalany outlined and provided status on the three components. The trail design, which is at a shovel-ready state, the glamping design at a conceptual state, and just kind of the progress and update within the destination and management plan. Following the presentation, council directed administration to bring forward, uh, discussion at the September committee of the whole meeting. On September 17th, 2024, the committee passed a motion recommending, uh, to council to direct the closeout of the 2023 planning of mountain biking Nordic and hiking trails and all seasons glamping referred to as phase one trail development. Project until financial commitments can be secured from external sources such as the provincial grant funding. Um, after talking with our honorable MLA, um, he definitely supports Recreation for Life, um, he is going to, uh, the ministries that are affected with potential grant funding and advocating on behalf of the MD and Canoos, so, uh, for the facility. Attached to the package was Appendix A, uh, and that was the report, uh, from September 17th. The reference to the strategic plan outlined promoting community development. With regards to costing, um, the only additional cost would be if we were to go with one of the options for council, and that would be a $36, uh, work plan proposal updating the 2022 Destination Management Plan. Administration recommended action is that council directs administration to close out the 2023 Planning and Mountain Biking Nordic and Hiking Trails and All Seasons Glamping Phase One Trail Development Project until financial commitment can be secured from external sources.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thanks for that. Uh, I'm glad you got, uh, you had a discussion with MLA. Scott Seer, I know he was in a meeting with us when, uh, we had the meeting with the Tourism , uh, Patrol Minister, and there were some, uh, some indications that we're pushing on a door that's open. So, uh, I was just looking for him to, I guess, solidify, uh, those comments, I guess, for funding. So, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for option number one.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Faddeh, for making this motion to Counselor X Administration to close out the 2023 Planning and Mountain Biking Nordic and Hiking Trails and All Season Glamping Phase One Trail Development Project until financial commitment can be secured from external sources as recommended by the committee of the whole. Any discussion on this motion, gentlemen? I'm seeing, and I'll call for the vote.
Thank you. Looking on to 9.4, point one.
Uh, Mr. Reeve?
Yes.
I'll excuse myself, recuse myself from this because this, I have a property in Aurora Borealis.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Sipchik.
Good afternoon, Mr. Reeve, members of council. This is, this RFD is for the Aurora Borealis Subdivision Water Feasibility Study Information. At the July 9th, 2024 regular meeting of council, council discussed the potential of providing water and sewer services to the Aurora Borealis Subdivision. Council directed administration to get an estimate for the cost of water and sewer feasibility study. Administration reached out to a consultant and received an estimate of $40,000 to perform the study. Administration would recommend that if council wishes to proceed with this feasibility study, that a budget of $60,000 be allotted to the project as the estimate was based on a high-level conversation with not much detail to the consultant. Knowing the cost and feasibility of providing water and sewer services to the Aurora Borealis Subdivision and subsequent locations along the way, i.e. the MD Airport Terminal, uh, will assist council in determining any future plans of utility expansion and development for both, of both residential and commercial locations. Administration will proceed based on the direction of council. And the, uh, reference to the strategic plan, goal one, building a viable and diversified regional economy with the objective being develop an economic development strategy inclusive of business and industry attraction, retention, and expansion while maintaining our rural influences and water and sewer expansion to targeted areas specific to economic development requirements. The funding, uh, option one for funding is $60,000 to be funded from infrastructure services operational budget, uh, consulting services, or option two to be determined, uh, at the 2025 budget deliberations. Communication of the decision will be made, uh, via the county, or sorry, the council municipal, or minutes posted on the MD website. And its administration's recommended action that council directs administration to proceed with a feasibility study for the supply of water and sewer services to the Aurora Borealis Subdivision at a cost of $60,000 to be funded from the 2024 Infrastructure Services Operational Budget.
Thank you, Counselor Faddeh.
Uh, thanks for that. So I guess with the consultant end of it, uh, is that a, a local company that understands our local needs that is supplying the assessment?
Uh, through the reef, uh, what I did was I just contacted the consultant that did the Cherry Grove feasibility study, uh, the water for the feasibility, or water for Cherry Grove. Uh, just to get, because he knew, uh, the area, I just thought I'd get a high-level estimate from him what it would cost. Uh, so again, once this happens, i- if council chooses to, to go this direction, we would put it out for, uh, for some bids for it.
Okay.
But that, that's who I contacted and it was only the one estimate I received just to get the RFD going.
Yeah, I, I understand their, their stuff was pretty reasonable compared to all the other costs that were coming in. So, yeah, thanks for that. Um, yeah, that's it for me.
Counselor Carson?
So basically we'll get the same report that you got for Cherry Grove, right? Is that right?
Uh, through the reef, theoretically, yes. They would give us, uh, uh, what the benefits are, uh, what the costs would be, what the, what the line would look like, what the future development could be. Uh, that would be all included in the feasibility study, yes.
So let's just say that, um, you know what? We said, yes, okay, we're going to build this line now. Does the company that came in to say we're building this line use that? Or would they have to then go buy the whole, a whole new line and say, listen, we're going to put this line in because this is what we think or whatever? You know what I mean? So what exactly would you use out of this feasibility study that you don't already know?
Uh, through the reef to Counselors Carson and, and all of council, a feasibility study just is not an engineering, uh, report. It's not an engineering study. It just shows, it gives us an idea of what the costs would be and what the benefits would be for putting a line into there. We could service X amount of properties, uh, potential revenue could be this amount, that kind of thing. That's what the feasibility study would be, would do. If council at that time chose to move ahead with putting water and sewer to that, then it would go out for engineering. That's when it, that's when they would say, look, it, this is the, uh, this is how we would have to build it. Here are the specs we would have to build it. We need an X diameter line, uh, we need some booster stations, we need some lift stations, that kind of thing. That's where that would come into, uh, that's where that would come in. The feasibility study is only to show, uh, give us some idea of the benefits of having water out there, uh, versus the cost.
So then I guess, next question would be, you know, we got the one for Cherry Grove and we basically said, okay, thanks, see you later. And, um, you know, are we just going to do the same thing here? Like, is there actually any hope of us putting a water line there? You know, and then in 10 years from now, is this feasibility study even current enough to use anymore?
Through the reef, I, I can't answer that. That, that's a council discussion. I, what we, what we do with the information is, is up to council. Um, I, administration would have a recommendation based on that report, however, uh, that, that's council's discretion as to what to do with the report.
Yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the feasibility, I mean, we, we keep hearing from the site link selectors that we had, that it's, it's, it's crucial to kind of any kind of future development. Uh, I'm more interested in the actual cost of the line versus feasibility study. And, uh, so that's, that's, you know, you know, we, like, excuse me, we keep hearing, okay, you need a four-inch line, you need a six-inch, you need a 10-inch. What is that line that we need and what is the cost going to be to there? That's, that's what I'm, that's what I want to see.
I think that's what everybody wants to see then.
Well, it doesn't, I mean, you'll never get back with, you'll never make that money back. So, I mean, feasible to do what? To, to make money off it or to, like, not go under because of it, right? Like.
Yeah, one thing you could do is like a, you know, like an off-site levy for that as well, that, you know, the people in that area and the airport users will pay a higher tax bracket for those services too, right?
Yeah.
But, uh, it's just one of those things where that's just, it was, it was key to what they were looking for.
Yeah, I did have, Mr. Reeve had a, a question that, can that feasibility study, Brian, could it include, uh, you know, the possible source of government funding? Because that's, that's what's killing us on all these and, uh, yeah, I think that should be part of that study, what's, what's actually available out there and can they give us some, some leads? Otherwise, you're not going to build these without some kind of help from the federal government, I don't think.
Through the reef, uh, typical feasibility studies do, do, uh, give a, a section in there on funding, um, what the appetite of the government is at the time of the study, whether there is money available, that kind of thing. So I would, I would venture to say that it would be, and if, if not, we can actually put that in the, uh, uh, in the description for the, for them to have checked out funding sources, governmental funding sources. So, yeah, that, that's not a problem if, if council chooses to go ahead.
Thank you.
Well, again, I would just say, like, to me, I get it. It's, you know, I'm glad that you're at least giving us this option, but unless we're ready to say, hey, listen, we've got five million bucks or 10 million bucks to put a line in, it's, to me, it's kind of pointless because it'll sit there on someone's desk for the next 10 years and then by the time we want to do it again, it'll be like, well, that one's no good, we'll have to get another one anyway. So, you know, unless we've got a fund or a reservoir or a reserve that's got all this money in it to build water lines.
Or else there's a grant coming out right away?
Yeah, unless we know of a grant or whatever, but again, if we know there's a grant, we're just building it anyhow, right? So, yeah.
So, uh, just to, I guess, say the same thing as the, one of the last ones that we talked about, that it's, again, it should be a budget item. It's to discuss, we're talking not just the, the study, we're talking if we do it, then we're going to go ahead with, we're hoping to go ahead of at least building a water line, which again would be more a budget discussion. Yeah, I, I'll, I'll make it for motion number two. Option two, I'll make the motion.
I think we've been told in the past that the water, risen water for life or whatever is kind of like a, not really used anymore or not, is it?
Yeah, so. Yeah, so all, like, all federal, like, that, like, there was a, that was a federal, it's called Tagline. So the feds have allocated that money towards the province. So the Minister of Transportation and you, so he's, he's the one that has it. So Grecian has that file now, and he's, he's in charge of anything that's horizontal, so roads, airports, and, and water lines. So, you know, so meeting with them and having the opportunity to meet with them, we can do, you know, two birds and one stone. Selling the airport and selling this water line as well for, for the, you know, for that part of it, so.
And again, I'm not opposed to it, but I think we would have to do our own feasibility study internally to say, can we even build a water line if it was feasible to do so?
Like, I hear numbers all over the place, right, going from, you know, a hundred thousand to a meter to whatever, to, what does that mean, huh? You know, how come the Coal Lake First Nations can't put water to every single resident out there and have their lines? And they're using, you know, the crossing companies, and they're pulling in, you know, six-inch lines or eight-inch lines throughout the whole, throughout the whole community, right? I, and I'm sure that those, those costs weren't eighty, hundred million dollars. So I just wanna really find out is, what those costs really are. Like, what's it really? Like, I, I don't wanna guess and then go, oh, it's gonna cost ten million bucks or five million. Well, really, what is it?
Okay.
Mr. Reeve, St. Paul County, they've been running water lines forever from, all the way from Edmonton, now it's to Malague. And so, you know, their, their Water for Life, it still, is still there. There's, there's probably all kinds of grants that we should be getting. So, I mean, I think we need to do that and, and see if what's available. But I guess we need to, we need to know where we're gonna start with this. Maybe the airport and that subdivision's a good one. I thought we should have started fifteen years ago at Moose Lake, but we gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, so I'll ask you then, we've got this feasibility study we did with the Cherry Grove, and how long ago was that now? It's gotta be at least a few years, right?
Four years, yeah.
So where is that one sitting, right? So we spent this money on this feasibility study, and did it tell us then that it's just not doable? Is that basically what we got out of it, right? So?
Yeah, just that it was too expensive, but we never looked at any type of grants. We just said it's gonna cost these folks too much money. Well, no, it's like.
So again, I would say that if before we even, like, we could talk about this in budget, but then I would ask, you know, Brian to come back and say, listen, we, you know, if you guys wanted to do this, this is what we'll have to do internally in the long run. We're gonna have to save, even if the government gave you a million bucks, we, we'd have to put in a million or two or five of our own, right? So, I mean, just doing studies, just to say we did a study is not worth it in my mind, especially now fifty thousand on the last one, sixty thousand on this one, and that goes add up, right? So.
To, to me, the feasibility means that if we can get a government grant, then is it feasible? Because then we can, you can have a, a local tax levy, and those people, like Ardmore and Fort Kent, the M.D. was, had the forethought to do that, you know, like, how mu, how many years? Forty years ago now. Where they, the M.D. got grants from the federal government and provincial government, and we put in water and sewer. And then people have been paying for, I have been paying for over forty years for that, but, you know, it's, people can handle that, right? Like, this is interesting, we're discussing this now, that one of those subdivision folks actually put in a, a water tank apparently? And it, and it cost them a fortune to put it in. I mean, had we had these discussions, they could have said, oh, no, I'd, I'd rather have the M.D. help out, and it would, you know, I could put that money toward this system or whatever. But we're, we're getting there maybe, but we're not getting there very fast.
Are we getting there at all, though?
Well, I'm hoping.
Are we any different now than we were six years ago?
No.
Okay, we have a motion. Any more comments on this, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
I think the feasibility study at this time is not the right way to go. I think we need a lot more information as well. It's gonna sit on a, on a desk and, and not do anything for a few years, like Counselor Scarsen said, so, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, we see in the province, with the help of Mr. Seer, that the village in Glendon got money for feasibility, feasibility study for the main inch line.
Water for Life.
Going from here to there, right? So, I mean, I guess, you know, with, with the new, I guess, with the new enforcement of the, you know, the building codes, if we're looking at any kind of future development in the M.D., it's just not gonna happen, right? Without having a hydrant to tie into and things like that. It's just, and I, you know, just looking at, I guess, the placement of for Aurora Borealis and our airport, it's the closest we can tie into without really going far. And just using that as, because, like, all those lots are gonna sit empty. They're not, they're not going anywhere because of the enforcement of the codes. When we're looking at having those tanks in, a lot of people are gonna say, no, I'll just, I'll go elsewhere and not, and not build in our M.D.
Well, there is, there is one closer.
And that's, and that's, and that's all, you know, those are all tied in together, right? And absolutely, can you, can you go there? And once it's going north, can you go, you know, can you go west a bit? Absolutely, right? And I, I think those are, but it just, yeah, it, it just, this, this new enforcement has really stunted our ability to grow as an M.D., as simple as that. No fire hydrants, can't tie into it, sorry, but you'll need X amount of gallons for X amount of square feet.
Okay, we have a motion, and I'm gonna read it now. Moved by Deputy Reeve Crick, that council directs administration to bring the proposal Aurora Borealis feasible study project to the two thousand twenty-five budget deliberations. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you.
Thank you.
On to nine point five point one.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, the first report I have today is for the intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board appointment for the clerk. So council recently established a new intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board, which will hear appeals of decisions from the subdivision authority and the development authority for each participating municipality, including the M.D. of Bonneville. As per the agreement for intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board services, each partner municipality must appoint one person to the position of clerk to complete the clerk duties as outlined in the agreement, as well as the Alberta Municipal Government Act on behalf of that municipality. The new board will be governed by a minimum of six members appointed between the municipal council and the council of each partner municipality, and administered, administrated for each participating municipality by a clerk appointed by their respective council in accordance with the agreement. So the clerk responsibilities and functions include receiving and processing appeals, compiling and providing agenda and meeting packages to the members of the board, reading and compete, excuse me, I can't speak today.
You sound like the Reeve.
Creating and keeping record of the board proceedings, and signing orders, decisions, approvals, notices, and other items given by the board on its behalf for their respective municipality. Uh, we are proposing to appoint me as the clerk for the M.D. of Bonneville. Um, I have been the clerk for the previous S.D.A.B. since two thousand twenty-one. Every clerk must successfully complete the mandatory training provided by the Provincial Land and Property Rights Tribunal, and I did just renew my training this past year. So administration's recommended action is that council appoints Stephanie Severin as clerk of the intermunicipal subdivision and development appeal board for the Municipal District of Bonneville effective immediately.
Counselor Fedeav.
I'm happy to make that motion. Congratulations for getting more work. Ms. Severin.
All right, thank, thank you, Counselor Fedeav, for making that motion. The council appoints Stephanie Severin as clerk as the intermunicipal subdivisions and development appeal board for the Municipal District of Bonneville effective immediately. Any discussion on this motion? Yes, Counselor? No. She looked up. I'll call for the vote. Oh, were you gonna say something?
I'm sure it was something here.
That's carried, five to three. No, just joking. On to nine point five point two.
So next we have the assistant clerk appointment for the joint assessment review board. Again, council recently established a new joint assessment review board, which will hear formal complaints against the assessment of properties, businesses, and local improvements for each participating municipality, including the M.D. As per the bylaw for the joint board, each partner municipality does jointly appoint the municipal manager of Legislative and Information Services as the clerk for the board. However, each partner municipality must also appoint one person to the position of assistant clerk. This person will assist with the execution of clerk duties as outlined in the agreement for joint assessment review board services, as well as the Alberta Municipal Government Act on behalf of that municipality. So this joint assessment review board will be governed by a minimum of, again, six members at large, and three members of council appointed between M.D. council and the council of each partner municipality, and administered for each participating municipality by the clerk, and an assistant clerk appointed by that, a respected municipality. Administration is proposing to appoint Wendy Wiley as the joint assessment review board assistant clerk for the Municipal District of Bonneville. Every clerk, again, must successfully complete the mandatory training provided by the Provincial Land and Property Rights Tribunal, and Wendy did complete her training earlier this year. Our recommended action is that council appoints Wendy Wiley as assistant clerk for the joint assessment review board for the Municipal District of Bonneville effective immediately.
I'd be happy to make that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Crick, for making this motion. The council appoints Wendy Wiley as assistant clerk of the joint assessment review board for the Municipal District of Bonneville effective immediately. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Yep, again. Seven, zero. Carried on to correspondence. And information.
I guess I'm going through that with you as well. In the package was a bunch of correspondence and information.
Anybody have anything to add, or, yeah, I'll go with Counselor Swagerd, then Counselor Fedeav? The counselor, yes. I got the names mixed up. Let's go Scarsen first, then.
I just want, uh, remember we talked about this, the Festival of Trees, that we say yes to sponsoring one there?
Um, so I'll, I'll kind of jump ahead a little bit, if that's okay, to council through the Reeve. There are a few requests for sponsorship and donations in council correspondence. I'll let Esther speak to them more. Um, if council has any questions, it's my understanding that the budget that this funding would have normally come out of is depleted, so.
Okay, well, why don't we bring her up, and, and then, like, some of the questions we might have might coincide with it?
There's plenty of money in the consulting services, but.
I'm pretty sure, yes. Or, or if we could put a train, or if we could put an airplane on the tree?
Yeah.
There'd definitely be some money for it.
You guys are so awesome.
Yeah, we're bad. I'm bad. Go ahead.
Okay, uh, through the Reeve, so yes, uh, council was informed a couple weeks ago that our donations and sponsorship and community action grant budget has now been depleted for two thousand twenty-four. As such, our moving forward, any requests for smaller size sponsorships are going to be put forward through council correspondence. So you'll see that the first bunch are here. This does not include those organizations who did agree to instead get an in-kind donation, whether it's a promotional item or a pass to the, to, at Kinesu, that sort of a thing. So we are encouraging them to do that instead of asking for a monetary sponsorship. However, those that are not doing that, we just wanted to bring to council's attention in case there was anything you would like done. So the first one that I wanted to bring up is the town of Bonneville's request for Festival of Trees. Just as a heads up, we have done this pretty much every year, since two thousand and ten, actually. So as far as past givings go, we are, our standard is to provide a thousand-dollar donation to the Festival of Trees event. So that's Festival of Trees. Uh, the CNRL.
So just wait, are, so are you asking us to, you're just gonna recopy everything and we vote on as a whole kind of deal? Or what are you, what are you asking here? Or are you just telling us what you're doing?
Through the Reeve, I'm, whenever there is anything within correspondence that you do want to action, then yes, I would suggest doing an individual motion per request.
But you just told us you're doing a thousand dollars to Festival of Trees, is that right?
Uh, through the Reeve, no, I'm, I'm telling you, I can't because we have no more budget. So if council does wish to provide a thousand-dollar sponsorship at this time, you would, we would need to, say, another source of funding other than the, than twenty-four operating budget.
We'll review them all, and then we'll go, we'll go after them.
Sounds good. So the first one is, like I said, the Festival of Trees. The Latin, next one that we did receive recently was a CNRL's annual steak and shrimp silent auction fundraiser. I believe that one, they are looking for attendance in addition to potentially a silent auction donation. So that one's a little bit different. Next one is the Bonneville Friendship Center. There was a request for attending the Night at the Gatsby event. If council wishes to attend that or provide any sort of in-kind donation. The next one we received was the Cold Lake Snowmobile Club. And that's their sleds and threads event. Again, that one was if they wished to provide, if you'd like to attend or provide a sponsorship, whether monetary or a donation. And we did do that one, I believe, back in twenty-three.
Yeah, we've done that one, and we've been invited. Usually, we do something for, for their auction, like a donated item, and they will usually get two tickets for somebody to attend.
And then the last one I wanted to mention is the Bonneville Senior Double-A Pontiacs. They did request the same sponsorship for their hockey season that we provided last year, which was a two thousand-dollar marketing sponsorship. We did the same thing in twenty-three, twenty-two, in twenty-two. That one is monetary value of two thousand dollars. So at this time, as far as potential sources of funding, currently, the two available options would be either the Community Action Grant Reserve, which I believe we're sitting at around a fifty or sixty thousand, or our cash flow reserves also be available. Other than that, that's.
So if we went to the community action grant for funding, how was that gonna affect it moving forward?
Uh, through the Reeve, that would deplete our, our reserve in case of future community action grant overages. For example, like we saw earlier in March, when we had our action grant applications, we had our large ones. We were, we had way more applications than we had funding. That's just our bit of a cushion for that program.
I would definitely like to see the two thousand-dollar tree to the Festival of Trees.
One thousand.
Isn't that one thousand?
Yeah.
Well, there's different levels, but you can do, one thousand is half a tree, or else you can do a two thousand tree.
I never read it, sorry. Okay.
Uh, through the Reeve, in previous years, we provided a one thousand, a one thousand-dollar sponsorship in twenty-two and in twenty-three.
Yeah, do you need, like, reach one, or whatever?
I would recommend a motion per each option.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to do the two thousand-dollar sponsorship for the Festival of Trees, then.
Okay. One item that I should also mention is in the council giving operating budget, you do still have one thousand dollars remaining. you do still have one thousand dollars remaining in your hundred thousand dollar budget. So you, for this one specifically, I would recommend a thousand dollars of that being sourced from your council giving budget and then a thousand dollars from whichever reserve you wish.
Yeah, sure, from the Community Action Grant Reserve is fine.
Yes, go ahead, Counselor Fadé.
Oh, I guess that's a motion, sorry.
That's a motion, yeah.
I'll get the one for next one.
Okay. I guess let's deal with the first one.
Getting ahead.
One from each.
One from the council and then one from the.
Community Action.
Community Action.
What is the thousand dollars from the council? Or?
It's a thousand dollars left in the council giving fund there.
Okay. All right, I'm going to read the motion here. Thank you Counselor Skarson for moving that council approves the request. Just left. Well, I'll call one back. Okay, I'm going to read the motion anyways. Thank you Counselor Skarson, that council approves the request by the Town of Bonneville for sponsorship of their Festival of Trees event in the amount of two thousand to be funded with one thousand from the 2024 council giving budget and one thousand from the Community Action Grant Reserve. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Yeah, that's carried. I think Counselor Fadé have had a motion to make next. Yeah, thank you. So in regards to sleds and threads, uh, just seeing if anybody can make it for that. I just look, check my, uh, my calendar and all, are we unavailable? Uh, usually we, we do a donation for their silent auction and then we also do two tickets. But if nobody can attend, uh, I'll just go make a motion for a donation amount instead.
Well, just keep in mind, I don't know, maybe it's the risk, but it's the same night as the CNRL Steak and Shrimp or whatever. I don't know, do you have to choose one or the other?
Oh, uh, yeah, I think tickets ahead of time. I mean, if we're not going to, uh, like I say, if we're not going to. Hey, guys, just, just hold your conversation here one at a time. Go ahead, Counselor Fadé. If we're not going to attend, let's just not give them the, the indication that we are, we'll just, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, uh, to, to a sponsorship of five hundred dollars. Okay. And do you have a funding source for that? Wherever. Miss Keen. So, just, yeah.
Mr. Chair, um, I've, I've received confirmation that there would be funding available in the council public relations budget for the purchase of tickets to an event or?
So if, uh, sorry, through, through the chair.
Yeah.
Should council wish to attend any of these, it would be available through the public relations budget, which is currently at a balance of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Yeah, firstly, there's going to be like no tickets for that because nobody's going to attend to, but there's other commitments that we've had. So I think it's just going to be a donation of five hundred dollars from Community Action Grant. So, not as chair, but just as a question here, could we do an in-kind sponsorship like, uh, you know, season pass, uh, not season pass, family pass to Kinesu or something? And then they can. So their idea of stove is not skiing down the hill. They're, they're a snowmobile club, so they have their own thing. And all that really helps with their, with their maintenance part, with the grooming and all that stuff that they have. Right. There's a lot of, uh, costs just to fuel and blades and tracks and all this. I hear you there. This is a fundraiser, so, but good question though. Thanks. Okay, we'll just wait for the motion to come up then. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Swiger.
Uh, in the past, what we, what, what we've done though is we also left it open to council. If you want to attend, you can, and then it just comes out of your council allotment of sixty-five bucks or whatever it is. I think there's sixty-five bucks a ticket, right?
I was just asking if anyone can go. I don't think anyone can even go, so.
Well, who's going to the steak, who's going to the shrimp event? Everybody?
To the shrimp event, I think, uh, Counselor Krivjak, and the emails asked for two tables to, uh, to do that, so I think we all committed to that. Who are we at?
Josh is getting mad at all of us.
Was he?
I grabbed your bag.
All right on. That's so important.
Sorry, Mr. Reeve, can I just get clarity on what the motion was?
So five hundred dollar donation.
Donation to be, and funded from the Community Action Grant Reserve?
Correct.
Who made that motion? All right, thank you Counselor Fadé for making this motion. The council approves a donation to the Cold Lake Snowmobile Club Sleds and Threads Dinner Event in the sum of five hundred dollars from the 2024 Community Action Grant Reserve. Any discussion on this, gentlemen? I'm seeing none, I'll call for the vote. I don't know, mine didn't come up on the screen, but I'll vote for it. That's carried, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, next.
Just for clarity, uh, I just confirmed, uh, with Mr. Bartlett that we have not yet bought tickets to the CNRL event, so if council wishes to do so, we can make, we're free to make a motion.
Yeah, I was going to bring that up, Mr. Reeve.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so if, uh, we all can go, we, uh, we needed two tables of eight, that'd be sixteen. So are we all planning to go to that?
What's the date on that?
October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth.
Where is it being held?
Bonneville Royal Grounds? O C two this year, okay.
That's in like two days?
October, October.
October twenty-sixth.
Sorry I wasn't there.
October twenty-sixth.
Okay.
Yeah.
That, that also is the same evening as the Glendon Firefighters Fall Ball.
Who's Fireball?
The Glendon Firefighters.
Ooh. Well, maybe just one table, huh? I'll make a motion for one table, to approve one table.
Who can all go here? Who wants to go? I, I usually go to the Glendon thing. So we got one?
Yeah, with CNRL thing, it's, uh, our biggest revenue source. Uh, we need to have, I'll, I'll definitely be there.
Okay. Two?
If not, some staff could go to get a table of eight.
Well, let's get a table. Okay, let's, let's order one table, make a motion to order one.
I'll make a motion to approve a table of eight for the.
And we'll fill it up.
Steak and Lobster Fest, CNRL.
Okay.
Steak and shrimp, sorry, yeah.
No, bring a lobster in specially for you guys. Burlgees. I'm going to check the cooler before I buy it this year.
Sorry Esther, just to confirm, this is being held at C two center. Good evening, nature, because it doesn't say anything on there.
I believe so, yes.
Am I waiting for a motion on the screen or? I don't have it. You guys have it?
No.
Yes?
I don't.
It's like half our things are working now, half of them aren't. Nope, nothing's coming up. Thank you Counselor Krivjak, the council approves purchase of a table of eight for the CNRL Steak and Shrimp Fundraiser Dinner to be held October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be funded from the council public relations budget. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. He's up and running again. That's carried, thank you. Next.
Well, I'd like to make a motion then also that, uh, we continue funding the Senior Pontiacs for the two thousand dollars. Is there something in marketing that they can cover that or? All this extra money here.
It's like the end of the season.
No kidding.
Uh, through the chair, as the sponsorship is an advertising sponsorship, uh, yes, we can put it through marketing and communications, advertising.
Right, is that a motion? Thank you. That's Counselor Skarson made this motion. All right, thank you Counselors Skarson for making this motion. The council approves sponsorship of the Bonneville Senior A Double A Pontiacs in the amount of two thousand dollars from the 2024 municipal operating budget. Any discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, just a quick question, I thought that's kind of coming out of the marketing or is that same, same wording?
Uh, through the Reeve, this one is a little different. It is coming from the marketing and communications budget.
But this is the way we're going to proceed. Okay, sounds good.
Any other discussion, gentlemen? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. That's carried, thank you. That's, that's it.
Okay, I'll make a motion and we receive the rest as information.
Oh, wait.
Oops, sorry.
Counselor Slitzer?
Yeah, I just want to highlight that, uh, about the email from, uh, Bonneville District Chamber of Commerce Business Resiliency Award nomination, which the M D is up for. And if we can make sure we give Roban confirmation, send an email a few days ago, give a confirmation who will be attending. I think it'd be good for, have M D representation here, especially being nominated.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm just looking for a motion to adopt correspondence and information.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you Counselor. Sorry Deputy Reeve Crick, I don't know what's wrong with my computer here. For making this motion, uh, for correspondence and information from ten point one to ten point one nine. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. I don't know why this thing is, oh, there we go. As information, sorry about that. I don't know, something's different on my computer. I left and came back, it's all different. Carried, thank you. Okay, uh, council, reports from members of council, whoever wants to start, go ahead.
Okay, I'll, I'll just start with the Alberta Care. It was actually a really nice event that we hosted in the M D and I think everyone was really appreciative of that, that event. And, uh, Mr. Olin talked a little bit about it. Um, a couple of the things that I found were interesting in that one was the waste energy. So there's a couple of initiatives happening. So there's, uh, Watasco and actually is working with a company called, um, what is that company called? Sepier or anyway, whatever they're called, I'll see if I can find it. But they're working on a waste energy, uh, project, but it's, it's one that has actually been already developed and it's in operation in, um, Nova Scotia, in Chester, Nova Scotia. And so, uh, you know, Watasco is looking at it, so, uh, it looks like, you know, something really good for Watasco and if it works well for them, maybe it could work lots of other places on a smaller scale. And then the other one was, um, maybe Counselor Fadé wants to talk about it too, but the Peace River guys are working with another, sort of a group of developers and investors that are looking to take what they've actually done and then, and then fine tune it using pyrolysis where they're using, uh, they're producing, uh, products, uh, where they're heating them to high temperatures, kind of in a vacuum, but in, in nitrogen gas or whatever they're using. And so that, that may work very well there too, and hopefully, hopefully we're getting closer to, uh, waste energy so we could actually maybe have something in the M D of Bonneville. Uh, the next one, I'll just mention the site link, it was, uh, it was super amazing. I'm, I'm, uh, I'm glad that our economic development, uh, folks put that on for us. Um, the, the folks that came down from different locations in the United States were pretty impressed. They're also very impressed that our council actually got involved in that because they said that very rarely happens, so they were good to see, they were really happy to see that relationship. Um, and they, like I said, they're interested in the area and I think, uh, our economic development guys getting feedback from them and maybe some, some hits on, uh, things that they're interested in. And, and one of them was really interested in Ski Hill and he's got his, his mind, uh, going at what he may be able to kind of help or whatever, invest in that, but we never know, but unless we invite him out and look, we, we don't get anywhere with that one, so that, that was good. Site link, uh, you know, hopefully it comes back in a few years and, and we get other kind of investment kind of folks interested. Uh, last one was the C two board, we had that meeting last night. Uh, they go over their budget every, every meeting and it looks like they're on, in line with everything, uh, they're excited, or the board's excited. I, I would say that we have, uh, uh, our new, uh, general manager starting on the thirtieth of September, so we're, we've given them sort of, we'll give them a sort of a two-month plan to work through things and, and work things out and then kind of report back to the C two board and, and what we can do going forward. So that was it for me.
Yeah, thanks, uh, in regards to, uh, Counselor Swiger to ask me to add on with Peace River. Uh, so yeah, Peace River pilot phase has kind of almost, almost been completed with some good cooperation from the Invibrant, uh, Ministry. Uh, which was kind of a little bit of a fast track, but it's, it's still, it's still good. So what they're, what they're doing now is they're getting involved with the, uh, with the, with the business end of it, and that part of it is looking at, uh, getting rid of old power poles and variable ties and everything else, that the, uh, there's enough, uh, heat in, in, in those, it's called a gasification, is there's enough heat in there that it will get rid of that and, uh, and it will be a money maker for them, so that's, that's pretty exciting. Uh, in regards to a site link, yeah, it was, man. that's, that's pretty exciting. In regards to Site Link, yeah, it was, man, that was real, you know, real eye-opening. So the, the states in the United States that were represented by these people that represent a lot of companies from small, mid-sized to large were North Carolina, Missouri, Texas, Arizona, and Chicago. So we had six different opinions on how to move or what to look for in, like in RMD. And, and one of the key things they kept kind of pointing their finger on was, was the airport. So, and that was everything else, and, you know, getting, so any kind of manufacturing, anything like that, that could be brought in, would have to be hooked up to some sort of water issues. So some of the stuff was very grand. I don't think we could ever host, but everything else was, was very, very, very interesting. And I'm, hats off to Esther and, and her team and Scott, Scott Govich for, for doing that. That was, was great.
I attended the same two conferences that we hosted, the Alberta Care Conference and the Site Link Conference. The one thing that, from the Site Link Conference, really stuck out to me was they talked about retention and expansion, and they're talking about the importance of just helping your businesses that are already here to grow, it's how important that is, even more important necessarily than getting new businesses in the area. And we missed our council action reports at the end of last meeting, so I just wanted to touch on that. I had a Northern Lights Library System Board Meeting. We've approved the budget for the coming year, and I can give that to staff if they want. And also there was a speaker there that was, he was from the BC Library Association, and he was promoting November 2nd, ADA's Climate Action Week. So I put a notice of motion in for our next council meeting that you all see then, and hopefully we can pass that. That's it for me.
Also the BFA and a couple of things that were mentioned there. They said that they had a pretty good volunteer group for the Cherry Grove fire. They had, they're doing train sessions there, I guess, now, so it sounds like a pretty good turnout with that so far, so that's good. And they brought, we discussed some of the concerns with benefits, premium budgets, and some of those are giving some pushback as well. So anyways, I'll be aware of some business as usual.
Thank you.
Yeah, I attended the Site Link Committee Meeting with the Site Link locators. It was very informative, interesting to hear them, all the opportunities they see, can see in our community. But they did highlight as well that if we want to bring outside the industry and all that, we have to be shovel-ready. Projects have ready for them to come in. They're not going to come and want us, want to wait three years to move forward. So that's something I think we got to really look at, economic development and going forward. But they all made wonderful, they commented that it was such a professional, well-organized event. And that saves a lot for our staff, administration, like Scott and everyone, that all the hard work they did, and Tracy, with her even graphing everything and putting all the binders together. It was a great job by staff, like they, they could, you guys helped make this, what it was, this event. And I'm sure we'll keep constant contact with lots of these people. And I know their eyes are open to all the possibilities out here that they could bring forward, but we have to be willing to put the money in to make these things happen too. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, I also went to the Alberta Care Conference, so I want to thank Matt and staff for the very well-organized event. We have some great tours. We had very good reviews from the tours, a nice banquet at the ridge, of course. Had a lodge meeting on the 18th. There's another outbreak of COVID there. So, Robin, we need to book the boardroom here for October 23rd, 5:30 for our next lodge meeting. Cold Lake now has three vacancies, two are pending, so only maybe one left. And Bonneville now has seven vacancies, so. Also had the FCSS meeting. October 6th to the 12th is Family Week Across Canada. We have an FCSS AA conference on November 13th to the 15th in Edmonton. They had a clothing exchange, and 380 people attended that event. It was very nice. Organized a community barbecue, 115 people attended. And they had a summer treasure hunt contest, and their favorite landmark was Vessel Beach. Nice to hear. Thank you.
I thought he was going to say pierogi for sure.
It's not in AMD, no.
Well, thank you, everybody. I didn't attend very much the last two weeks. I was in the combines, but I thank you all for attending the care and the Site Link. It sounds like they're very great, and thank you to the staff for putting these on. I appreciate it. All right, I think we just have to go, we just have a closed session now, correct? All right, I just need a motion to go into closed session and continue. Thank you, Counselor Slipcheck. All those in favor? Carried, thank you.